We're just waiting for him to go live. Alright, I'm gonna pause for a second because the screen should have had the video of all of you. There we go, we're live now, thank you. Alright, welcome to this candidate forum for seat number four for the Sunnyvale City Council. I'm Elaine Manley from the League of Women Voters and I'll be the moderator this evening. The League of Women Voters hosts forums like this to allow voters to see the candidates and hear them address questions of interest to the public. Our goal is to enable voters to learn about the candidates so that they can make informed choices. The League never endorses or opposes a candidate or a political party. So four of the seven seats of the Sunnyvale City Council are up for election this November. The candidates must run for a particular seat and all Sunnyvale voters get to vote for one candidate for each seat. We are conducting separate forums for each city council seat over a two-night period in order that was chosen randomly. This forum is for the three candidates for seat number four. Mike McCarthy, Larry Klein, and John Cordis. The candidates have agreed to a format and ground rules for this forum. I will pose the questions and designate response times of ninety seconds or sixty seconds. We have a timekeeping team up front. They will give the candidates visual signals to help them pace their responses and to please help them stop on time. Each candidate has a thirty-second rebuttal card that they may use to rebut remarks from other candidates. The rules do require that all candidate responses, including the rebuttals, pertain to the current question. So the questions for this forum were developed by a team of League members based upon their own research and questions submitted by the public via email. We will not be taking questions from the audience this evening. The questions chosen do not reflect the views of the League of Women Voters or even the members who worked on the questions. Instead, we're trying to ask questions from different perspectives within the Sunnyvale community. Our goal is to provide information to help voters make a choice among the candidates. So this forum is being recorded and aired on the Sunnyvale's government channel. The ground rules ask that the candidates not use the recordings of the forum for campaign purposes. We also encourage the audience not to record the forum because we want it to be shown in its entirety and we will tell you how to access the forum at the end of tonight's program. Finally, we ask the audience to refrain from displays of support or opposition and please hold your applause until the end of the forum. We'll now turn our attention to the candidates. Thank you so much for running for office and participating in this forum. Your speaking order, as you know, was chosen randomly and we will start with Mike McCarthy. The first question, you have ninety seconds. What are your qualifications and what motivates you to serve on the city council?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us out tonight and all of your attending. My qualifications are pretty extensive. I've been an independent business owner for thirty years. Managed businesses, I'm currently CEO and president of my own company. I've been involved in activities with my church for many years and I have leadership positions there that I hold. Married to my wife for twenty years, we're Sunnyvale residents, long-term residents. I came out here initially in the early eighties with the Navy at Moffett Field. So I've been here for a long time and really love the community. I'm really passionate about serving the community and I think I'm currently the president of the Plaza del Rey Residents Association, which I formed, my wife and I formed about eighteen months ago and we served, currently serve actively on that. And we're involved in rent stabilization and rent control issues for the mobile home communities at large and we're involved in that, so that's what really kinda brought me here.
Thank you. Larry Klein.
Yes, thank you very much. First, I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight and the residents who showed up and who are watching it at home. As far as myself, I wanna thank the residents of Sunnyvale who had the confidence to vote for me in the August special election. It was, it was very good, it was a very good turnout for a special election and I'm sorry that you actually have to vote again for, for me for the four-year term. I've been active in the city for the last fifteen years. I've been nine years on the Planning Commission where I learned about land use and transportation issues. I've been six years on, on the Historical Society Board, on several other nonprofits, Charles Street Garden, Full Circle Farm, and other committees within the city. I'm motivated to try to make the city better, you know, basically improve our quality of life for everyone. So I understand the issues, I understand the issues that we face on a daily basis and my priorities as far as finishing the downtown, handling traffic issues, adding affordable housing are near and dear to my heart and those are the citizens themselves. I understand that what it takes to make a good city and I've been active in the city and have the endorsement of many, many community leaders and regional leaders. And I hope that you'll take a look at my website, larryforcouncil.com, and get the full information. Thank you very much and I hope to have your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. John Cordis.
Thanks to the League of Women Voters and people coming out and watching us tonight. I'm running because I have a positive vision for Sunnyvale when I think many residents share. I wanna create a Sunnyvale with an improving quality of life, enough affordable housing for many of the people that work here to live here. People aren't frustrated every time they wanna try and get around town because we have less crowded roads, more frequent and convenient bus services, great walking and bicycling options. We have a robust economy, a vibrant downtown, a stable budget, many branch libraries in our neighborhoods and we continue to add new parks. We protect our long-term residents and provide for a more diverse community by rent stabilization and we solve the homelessness crisis. I want Sunnyvale voted the most sustainable city in the Bay Area. I think all of us want that here. For my qualifications, I care about Sunnyvale residents and I listen to you. I grew up caring for three younger siblings, so looking out for others is natural for me. My commitment to others deepened during my years at the United States Coast Guard Academy, the Coast Guard's version of West Point. I came to the Bay Area in nineteen eighty-one with a bachelor's degree in engineering management and then in eighty-nine I got a master's from Santa Clara University in engineering management. I spent over twenty years as an engineer or engineering manager at National Semiconductor, from which I retired in two thousand and eight. I've been a twenty-year Sunnyvale resident. I've dedicated this Sunnyvale, I've been on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission since two thousand and fourteen. I'm currently an energized Sunnyvale volunteer and I've been chair of my neighborhood association for three years. I have decades of experience as a Sierra Club leader and at my church.
Thank you. Alright, our next question, we'll start with Larry Klein. Sixty seconds to respond. For some residents, the city initiative currently on the ballot highlights concerns about decision-making by the city council. What would you do as a council member to encourage trust and confidence in city decision-making?
Sure. First thing is listening to, listening to the citizens. So as a council member, I've already started weekly office hours to have citizens come to me with their problems and concerns. As far as the Rayner Park Activity Center, that's what caused the, ultimately the Measure M to be proposed within the city. It's a reactionary proposal. I voted against the use permit for that project although I then worked with the developer to make sure that they actually paid their, their way to deal with the park next to them so that they paid for the upkeep of that park to get priority use. I'm dedicated to make sure that the council listens to the citizens and make sure that there's an appropriate public outreach in multiple ways to make sure that they understand the issues and understands what's happening in their community. Ultimately, I think that it's council's responsibility to make sure that we have an informed citizens and informed residents when we're making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. I think we all kind of agree about the three causes for Measure M, the Rayner Activity Center sale. The Rayner Park Priority Use Agreement was a huge part of the problem with people feeling that we were giving away control of our parks and then concerned about selling or leasing the Civic Center. So that caused a lot of concern amongst residents, which is justified. There's a couple of things I think that we should be doing as far as to alleviate people's concern. Like Larry said, we need to be doing a lot more outreach and communication with citizens. One of the platforms I'm running on is a lot more two-way communication. So I want it to be easier for residents to be able to call into any meeting that City Hall is putting on, any meeting, whether it's the Parks Commission, the Bicycle Commission, Sustainability Commission. I want anybody to be able to call in and participate in that meeting, ask questions. And I think the shame should be true for video communication. So I wanna make it much easier for communication, people to be engaged. And I think Sunnyvale needs to do a much better job of reaching out with spot polling, like what they do when they go to the farmer's market. They've only done that twice recently and I would encourage what we do a lot more of that kind of communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, as you know, the city has a balanced growth plan, a twenty-year plan and if you look at the community condition indicators, you'll see that the city council has not done anything to manage and balance those community indicators. All this issue with Rayner Park facility sales really comes down to the fact that it's just mismanagement of city resources. If you look at the city budget, the city revenues are up over fifty percent over a four-year period and yet despite the fact that city revenues are up over fifty percent, the city feels it's necessary to sell off assets. As a business person, I would not liquidate city assets. Certainly, if we did do any liquidation of city assets, I would take that to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with John and it is sixty seconds for a response. What is your understanding of the relationship between the city council and the city staff? When there are differences between council and staff, how would you deal with disagreements between you and the staff?
Okay, thank you for the question. As you heard earlier in the prior talk, the council really only has two employees, the city manager and the city attorney. Though that's the direct connections, but I think that city staff can do a lot more, or excuse me, city council can do a lot more, giving direction from the dais when they have inputs to city staff. So I think we need to, it's, it's difficult to be up here and try and give direction to staff about what you want them to do. So we need to make it easier, we need to make it more approachable for council members to make meetings with staff members or go to commission hearings so that they can more easily engage with staff about issues that they have disagreements about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Great question. Yes, I would have an open-door policy. Generally, if someone at city staff has a question or concern, they should be able to talk to city council. There is a management process involved with the city manager and the city attorney. Obviously, if you have a good process, you're not gonna have too many issues. But I always felt that as a manager and a business owner, if the lowest person on the totem pole couldn't knock on my door and come in and talk to me, there's something wrong with the organization. I'm sure there's processes and procedures in place where if there's a disagreement between city council and staff, that working with the city manager and city attorney, those issues should be worked out and follow the standard procedures that are in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Yes, thank you. After nine years on the Planning Commission, I have a really good working relationship with city staff. As far as moving to council, as was said previously, the city manager and the city attorney are the main two people that work for council. That being said, it's council's responsibility to set the appropriate policies, put those in place and that gives the ultimate direction to all of city staff. So if there's a specific issue, a specific problem, you deal with the city manager and the city manager would ultimately take care of those issues. But at the end of the day, it's council's responsibility to set a vision, set a policy that will ultimately direct city staff and give them their working orders on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will start with Mike McCarthy. Sixty seconds to respond. Mobile homes have traditionally contributed to Sunnyvale's stock of affordable housing. Do you think Sunnyvale mobile homeowners should be protected from unaffordable rent increases? If so, how would you propose to do that?
Well, full disclosure, I am a mobile home park owner. I'm also a manufactured home dealer. I've been in the business ten years and I've put many of the homes in the parks here in Sunnyvale. I'm for rent control for mobile home parks, flat out. In fact, that's what propelled me to this dais tonight was as the president of the Plaza del Rey Association, we worked with Glenn Hendrix. He came out to the park in Plaza del Rey. He told us at that time that we could, the city council has the authority to write an ordinance for rent stabilization. He made no promises. We went in, we did a twenty-two-page study that we put together through the Rent Stabilization Committee. We presented to the city council and only Pat Myron was the only gentleman that had enough vision to make a motion to do that and nobody else on the city council would do that. So talk is cheap and that's why I'm here, is to affect change for mobile home resident owners and to make sure that we can do something to typically residents' law change, state and federal, because the city council's not doing anything.
Thank you. We're gonna change the order a little bit, so now we'll hear from John and then from Larry.
Thank you. I agree that the mobile home parks are a critical part of the affordable housing inventory we have here in Sunnyvale and for the longest time, just having a conversion ordinance was enough to protect them. But the land has become so valuable now and the people becoming so vulnerable, there's no place for them to move anymore, right? They can't actually take these things and go to another park. So we need to protect them and protect them as affordable housing by supporting rent stabilization. I completely agree with that and I think it needs to be council-passed so that the council can modify it. Other people have said that they want rent control to be done by the residents themselves. Well, residents aren't really good at writing rent control ordinances and then you have to overturn it or change it with a vote. So we really need council to come forward and protect the mobile home park residents with a rent stabilization ordinance. I have friends that live in the parks. The stress on them is incredible right now as they try and figure out what their future looks like. A lot of them assume that they were gonna be able to live in these parks for the rest of their lives and now all of a sudden, you know, the value of their homes is dropping through the floor and/or they can't figure out if they'll be able to afford to stay there anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we have a red card. Now, do you wanna rebut immediately or do you wanna wait for Larry? You can do either way. You can wait for Larry to have... Okay, Larry Klein.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, I was at Plaza del Rey in April when the mayor showed up and was very, very torn as far as some of the stories of the residents in Plaza del Rey mobile home community. I definitely think that there's an issue with the will of the council to approve a mobile home rent stabilization measure immediately and they do, they have proposed a study issue for next year. I fully support funding that study issue and getting it done as quickly as possible in two thousand and seventeen. And what I told the residents were, if they want something done sooner, what they need to do is basically create a ballot measure, you know, it's like do the study. One of the issues in looking at what other cities have done, I've been worried about what those, what the terms are for those different measures and I'm hoping that what will come out in that study is, is basically a succinct idea on what rent stabilization could be for these neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so now we have a thirty-second rebuttal from Mike McCarthy.
I would just like to say, the city council came out to the community and said that they had the authority and ability to do a measurement, an addendum. We gave them the opportunity and they would not second the amendment. If you're gonna be a leader, you need to make a decision. And my decision as city council member, if elected, would, I would take immediate action on that for the residents because the city likes to say we have four hundred and ten acres zoned for mobile home housing, but they don't wanna define affordable housing. So some laws have to be changed, but the city council could do something, and they should've and they didn't.
Thank you. Are you lifting a card? You're lifting a card, okay. So are you ready, guys? Thirty seconds? I had to make sure my timers are ready for you. Ready? Okay.
So hopefully I made the difference clear here between what the city council wants to do, which is wait a year to start to study it, which means the earliest they would probably do something is two thousand and eighteen, which could be two rent increases to the poor people that are in these mobile home parks and two years of stress while they wait for this to happen. I'm in favor of memoratorium now on increases and I think you should use that as a litmus test for deciding who you're gonna vote for if you care about these neighbors in the mobile home parks.
Thank you. Alright, so now we're going to the next question. We will start with John Cordis. You have sixty seconds to respond. The question is, what can be done to create more affordable housing in Sunnyvale?
Thank you. This is one of the three issues that I'm running on is affordable housing. As a lifelong environmentalist, I think it's really important we figure out how to make it easier for people to live here so that we have less people commuting in and having low quality of life by having to drive hours from far away. We have the worst commutes in the, in the nation, in the Bay Area. And that's because we haven't dealt with the affordable housing problem. So my big issue and my number one solution for this is increasing the fees we charge developers. Nobody else that's running this race wants to raise those fees. Right now, we're only charging seventeen dollars a square foot and other cities like Palo Alto are charging thirty. So I've, and when this issue came before the city council in two thousand and fifteen to get voted on the very first time, I advocated for twenty-seven dollars a square foot because that was the highest price they were willing to consider. Instead, they ended up at seventeen. So increasing the fees we charge developers will give us a lot more money to provide a lot more affordable housing. And there's dozen other recommendations on my website of other things we can do as far as zoning and ordinances to make it easier to build affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Klein?
Yes, thank you. I've been a longtime affordable housing advocate. I've been working with nonprofits, nonprofit housing organizations for years. Mid Peninsula Housing, First Housing, trying to, trying to basically have more affordable housing built here within Sunnyvale. I'm a big proponent for Measure A. I've got plans as far as building smaller units at the, basically transit center so there's, there's less traffic impact, as well as changing the granny unit laws within the city. So I have a lot of plans to deal with this issue and it's been an ongoing issue close to my heart because definitely the issue as far as living wage and people trying to find homes within this community is, is something that is affecting so many people within our, so many residents, so many people within the region. And it is a regional issue and Sunnyvale is a good, is a good neighbor building affordable housing and needs to do more and as much as possible to get more built here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike McCarthy?
I love this question. My business for the last many years has been building actually second dwelling units, unaffordable housing. I've actually delivered one over the weekend in Los Altos Hills. You can go see, it's beautiful. Yes, Larry's right, we need to revise the granny unit laws, the second dwelling laws. Redwood City just passed a new law in December and I'm actually involved in, up there with a client doing a second dwelling unit up there. You can go in and you can revise the laws to make it more habitable. That's one thing, I think that's a great thing to do, is make it easy for the residents to do these second dwelling units. But the number one cause of lack of affordable housing is the over-development and massive deviations from the building plan with all this Class A R and D structures that are being built. We just, on the city's blog, another five hundred thousand square feet on, right off Matilda, Class A. No, no infrastructure requirements for schools, for low-income housing. The city and my opponent's been signing off on eighty-nine of these projects the last year, the last few years as I was planning. This is what they've been doing. So if you want this more of the same, vote for these guys.
Thank you. Alright, our next, red card. Okay, so thirty seconds for Larry Klein?
Yes, as far as my, my voting on the Planning Commission, I've been, for one thing, I voted for a higher developer fees for, from a housing situation. I did vote for twenty-one dollars unlike what John said. And as far as approving projects, I've approved projects, I've said no on projects. I have, I'm an independent thinker and look at each, at the effects of each project, try to reduce the traffic, try to reduce the heights. And if the project is in the wrong place in the city, I say no. And that's the important thing, you need somebody with an independent mind to, to look at these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, our next question, Larry Klein will go first. You have sixty seconds to respond. Sunnyvale residents may apply for a zoning change of their neighborhood to limit homes to one story if at least fifty-five percent of current residents agree with the request. Do you think these owner-initiated zoning changes are a good idea? And should this type of opportunity be extended to owners of other types of property within this, within the city?
So as far as a single-story combining district, I think it's a good, it's a good process within the city in order to protect single-story neighborhoods. Those are Eichler neighborhoods, those are single-story neighborhoods that are unique to a certain degree because a two-story home conceivably affects the characteristics of that neighborhood and often there are neighbors that, that feel that the privacy issues that come with two-story homes ultimately affect the character in some of these homes. The way the development was ultimately built makes it very difficult for, for two-story homes to be built. I think that it's a good tool. Ultimately, I think the process does need to be reevaluated from a study issue because there are some process issues from when this was put in place about fifteen years ago to deal with the monster home on Wright Avenue that people know about. And as far as extending this to other, other neighborhoods, I don't think that that's, or other, other types of homes, I don't think that that's actually valid, valid. I think single-story homes are the appropriate area to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike McCarthy?
Well, I'm initially opposed to telling the property owner what he can, he or she can do on their property. However, I know that other jurisdictions, because I'm involved in this type of activity, they have planning guides and a proper way to do a second story with a second story, that's an offset second story, so it's not a box. So I think the, the Planning Commission can do and the city council can come with a design to lay down guidelines for the second stories. I think more study needs to be done. A lot of the other counties and jurisdictions do have good guidelines for how to do second stories appropriately so it doesn't affect the single-story homeowner. On outright, I would not try to impose my beliefs on a homeowner and what they can do outright. I think that's up to the plan, the city plan.
Thank you. John Cordis?
Thank you. I'm in favor of the current ability for neighbors to get together and decide that they wanna restrict the zoning in their neighborhood to one story. That's a community decision and that's what America's all about, enabling people to have the power to make decisions on, you know, that affect them as close to home as possible. That's why we have a distributed form of government. So I'm in favor of that. Is fifty-five the right percent, the right number? I, I'm a little bit concerned about that. I think a study issue on that might be good. It might be better if it was sixty or sixty-five. And as far as extending the same policy to other styles of homes, I agree that it's probably only makes sense to have a kind of, this kind of application for single-story homes. I can't see how it would work on a townhome complex or something else where it would, where it would make sense to have this kind of special overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, our next question will start with Mike McCarthy. You'll have ninety seconds to answer. Many residents are concerned about negative impacts of growth and development such as worsening traffic or overcrowded classrooms. What can the city council do to manage growth so as to maintain a good quality of life for Sunnyvale residents?
I think the most important thing they can do is stick to the twenty-year plan on the balanced growth profile and the community condition indicators. If they'd stay with that plan, they wouldn't have a problem. The other thing they need to look at is a long-term aspect of what type of structures do we wanna build? If you're, all you're gonna do is these Class A R and D buildings and bring in high-tech workers and not think about housing, that's a design flaw by nature. We need to think about the long-term use of our community. San Jose is a great area where they have larger lot size. We should encourage some of these high-tech companies to go out of the area into more affordable homes where there's larger lots. I think Sunnyvale has enough development for the high-tech community. We need to focus more on affordable housing and single-family housing. That's what I think.
Thank you. Larry Klein?
Yes, Sunnyvale does need to focus on managing its growth and that's done through multiple, multiple different things, one of which are the TDM, Transportation Demand Management Plans, put in place on office buildings and, and now on residential units. Part of that basically reduces the number of trips to and from a specific site. From a management standpoint, we need to get people out of their cars and that's through proposing better Class One trails for bicycles and pedestrians. That's also a citywide shuttle so that people don't have to get in their car every time to go to the store, to go to the market. And ultimately, when you start looking at that, we just need to make more walkable communities and that's, that's reliant upon the citizens and city council ultimately to rezone properties appropriately so that there are more mixed-use properties so that communities are more walkable. If there's a retail component next to an appropriate residential component, people will most likely be able to walk to what they actually need to do as opposed to get in their car. And then it's, and then finally, as far as managing the city overall, looking at what we can do to, to reduce the pass-through traffic is going, is always going to be difficult. But focusing on getting people out of their cars and their homes, focusing on the people coming into the office buildings, reducing the number of people going to work or increasing the number of people on buses, that's what the city can do and propose. Thank you.
Thank you. John Cordis?
Thank you. I feel there's a lot the city could do to manage growth better than it has been currently. Starting with our land use and transportation element, which is our plan for the next twenty years, we're currently at a jobs-to-housing ratio of about one point four, which would, and according to the land use and transportation element plan, we're gonna take that to one point seven. So we're gonna add fifteen thousand more houses and forty thousand more jobs in the next twenty years. I don't think that's acceptable. We should push, all of us should push back on city council to say that the jobs-to-housing ratio needs to go down and not up. So from the current one point four, it needs to go down to one point two to help make up for the shortage of housing we've been dealing with the last twenty years. I think we should have incremental development caps at various points like we're planning, like we're using in the Lawrence Station area plan. One of the problems with Moffett Park was we planned it to be, take twenty years to build out and the property was so appealing to developers, they built everything that they were allowed to and ate. And they gave us no chance to adapt to the fact that the growth was happening so fast. We need to improve transit because again, people aren't really as much concerned about tall buildings as the fact that the impacts it has on their ability to get around and nobody likes being stuck in traffic. So we need to increase developer fees to provide more money for... So, we need to increase developer fees to provide more money for transit so that we can make it easier for people to get around by biking, walking, and free shuttle buses. We need to require eco-passes for new developments like along the El Camino Real corridor. So the people that live there will have a much more incentive to jump on a bus to go up and down the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question, you'll have ninety seconds to answer. We will start with Larry Klein. What proposals do you have to alleviate traffic congestion in Sunnyvale? And what viable public transit options do you envision for people working or living in Sunnyvale?
Sure, very similar to the last question. As far as my proposals for, to reduce traffic and improve the quality of life, the first thing, of course, is the citywide shuttle. Right now, the city has in its plans to deal with a Perry Park rides shuttle, which will start next year, which will mainly be focusing for basically shuttle service for the people working in Perry Park during the morning and afternoon rush hours. But during the daytime, it'll be for the residents, to take them from their homes to the shopping centers downtown, to the shopping centers on El Camino. And so that's a first-stage program that ultimately, when it's successful, my guess is, two years from now, we'll be expanding that throughout the city. The next thing, of course, is Measure A. Measure A, or sorry, Measure B, which will ultimately help with a county-wide issue of improving infrastructure, supporting, improving the Caltrain, upgrading the Caltrain system, extending BART. So, traffic is a regional issue, and Sunnyvale needs to work with the regional leaders in order to improve traffic overall. Finally, I've been a long proponent of getting people out of their cars and improving bicycle and pedestrian activity. So, I propose study, I've been on the Stevens Creek Trail extension, extending that Class One trail. I proposed using the East and West channels, converting those into trails so that pedestrians and bikes don't have to interface with cars. I think that's the best thing that the city can do. Thank you.
Thank you. John Cordis.
Thank you. I serve on Sunnyvale's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission right now, and I have way too many ideas to list in the short amount of time I've been allocated, so I'll just cover the top few. As I mentioned already, we need to increase impact fees, traffic impact fees. We can't do any of these plans without finding a source of funding. So everybody can promise you better whatever, but unless we find a funding source, it's not gonna happen. We need to provide better transportation alternatives like people have talked about, more bicycle, better sidewalks, more shuttle services. I'm really looking forward to the Perry Park shuttle since I had lived there, and I'm hoping I can take advantage of it. One specific plan I want to propose is Sunnyvale is below the county average in percentage of people who bicycle to work. We're at one point four percent. Mountain View's at five, Palo Alto's at nine. So I'd like Sunnyvale to set a plan on how we're gonna increase bicycle commuting by one percent a year. We live in the best place in the world for bicycle commuting, flat, beautiful weather, so we need to promote that more often. I'd also like set higher traffic demand management requirements. I pushed for forty percent in the Perry Park project. All right, the commission, this council only went with thirty percent and thirty-five percent during commuting hours. Same thing with every project I've ever spoken about, Perry Park, Moffett Field, El Camino specifically, Real, every case I've pushed for higher traffic demand management requirements. I'd also think we need to be investing a lot more in making safe routes to school work better. There's no reason we should have four hundred parents driving their kids at the front door of the local school, right? We need to make it possible for a lot more kids to walk and bike to school.
Thank you. Mike McCarthy.
Yes, I have several ideas on this, and I think, you know, I'm not against bikes. I think bikes are great, but I love my car more. And I tell you what, you know, this is America, and Americans love cars. They've been trying to get Americans out of their cars forever, and it's not working. A couple of things that I would do immediately if allowed, smart lights, you know, you have the Internet of Things now. You know, I was on my way to church Sunday morning, and it was early, and we stopped at the light, and we waited, and no traffic coming. Now, if you had a smart light there that could detect that there was cars backing up, we could have proceeded forward. So I think smart lights is one thing. I would move to eliminate the carpool lanes in the urban areas when you have high density. I think that's the biggest boondoggle ever, a carpool lane. I mean, they said they're gonna save you, but I just don't see it. I think developers could pay fees into a fund where the funds could provide vouchers to low-income families for Lyft, Uber rides. I mean, yeah, we could do more shuttles than buses, but I think you just gotta start to think outside the box a little bit. You only have so much street. And if you got a carpool lane down the middle of Lawrence Expressway, and you've got not that many people in it, and everybody else is packed and congested and gridlocked and burning fossil fuels, if you eliminated that carpool lane, you would move traffic a little faster. That's just a common sense approach. Good luck getting it done, but that's one of the things that we could do along with smart lights and more fees for vouchers or city buses, I think is a good idea through the planning development.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we'll start, oh, sorry, red card up for John. Thirty seconds, are you guys ready? Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Carpool and high occupancy vehicle lanes are an important part of our future. Particularly as people age, we're gonna have double our population over sixty-five in the next fifteen years. We need to be providing ways for them to get around that don't rely on them driving themselves. I agree, part of our transportation problem is we have to figure out how to start adapting to self-driving cars, right? So, how are we gonna merge those in? How are we gonna make self-driving buses? How are we gonna make it much easier for people to get around without having to drive a car? Because there's no way we can afford the greenhouse gases if we wanna keep allowing everyone to drive.
Thank you. Okay, you'll be starting with the next question. You'll have sixty seconds to respond. What steps do you think the city can take to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety and to increase bicycle use as an alternative to cars?
I've thought about this a lot as a representative on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. One of the things that we propose and the city bought off on is creating a Vision Zero Plan for Sunnyvale. Vision Zero means you look at every bicycle and pedestrian accident with the intent of figuring out how to prevent it from happening again for any serious injury or death. Sunnyvale has fortunately not many of them. Most of them are along El Camino Real because we have such long stretches without a corner. So people tend to jaywalk and run across the street, and that's where we lose most of our pedestrians. So, putting in better infrastructure, complete streets like the Grand Boulevard requires would be a great way to make it easier for people to be safer and get around easier. We need a lot, we need to double the amount of bicycle lanes we have in Sunnyvale in the next ten years. And we also need to implement cycle tracks. Cycle tracks are protected bicycle lanes where there's a physical barrier, usually cones, that protect the bicyclists from the drivers. And as we get more people on their bikes, the more often people in cars see bikes, the more they pay attention to them, and it gets much safer.
Thank you. Mike McCarthy.
The last thing I wanna do is turn Sunnyvale into downtown Shanghai with bicycles everywhere. I like bikes, but I don't think they pay enough in fees for, I mean, let's, what are the, how much fees do they generate for the city of Sunnyvale? All right, you wanna put all this infrastructure in for bicycles, and they're not even paying their fair share. So, to me, it's ridiculous. Yes, sure, have bikes, have bike lanes, but I don't think that's a priority for the city. I'm sorry, it's done.
Thank you. Larry Klein.
I do think it's a priority, getting people out of their cars, whether or not it's walking or bike, biking is very important. Dealing with the greenhouse gas issue, dealing with climate change. I think ultimately what the city needs to do are many of the things that John said and many of the things that have been proposed by the BPAC Commission. Ultimately, dealing with the trail issue, having more Class One trails is critical so that people feel safe riding on their bikes. So that's extending Stevens Creek Trail, creating the East and West, converting the East and West channel, water district channels into trails, creating a barrier along the street between the bikes and the cars. All those will make it safer for those people to bike. And definitely there are citizens that will never feel safe biking, and we need to make sure that they have, they're appropriately represented in the city. But whatever the city can do to make it easier for people to bike will be better for the environment overall and more sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. For this next question, we'll start with Mike, then we'll go to John, and then to Larry. You'll have sixty seconds each. Sunnyvale had a history of strong fiscal management based in part on its long-term budgeting practices. However, in recent years, discussions on financing major capital projects have centered on bonds or transactions of city-owned lands. Do you think there has been a shift away from long-range planning towards short-term thinking within city decision-making? And do you support budgeting to set aside the money that will be needed for future capital projects?
Great question. Yes, the city has been focused on short-term planning. All you have to do is look at the CCIs, and you'll see where they've spent on their money. Long-term planning is an important aspect of it, but I'm all about smaller government and less, you know, I'm not really a big fan of taxing the taxpayers for bonds and things of this issue. We need to really look at that and see what makes sense. They have these initiatives on the ballot measure now for affordable housing, and, you know, I'm just not a big fan of government-running programs. I think private enterprise does a much better job, and I think the voters need to be aware of what any initiatives are out there, or they wanna grab more money from you so that they can provide you with more services. It's just not working. Just look at the, all you have to do is look at the balanced growth initiative and plans and the CCIs, and you can see what the actual track record has been of the city. Remember, revenues are up fifty percent the last four years, and they're selling off city assets.
Thank you. John.
Thank you. I think one of the things I admire most about Sunnyvale is the long-term twenty-year budgeting process. I've attended budgeting meetings for the last few years, and it's really amazing to watch how the city takes into account the cost of everything over the entire twenty years. When we look at adding a police officer, we look at it as what's that cost over the next twenty years, not what it's gonna be over the next few years. Sunnyvale is struggling, like a lot of cities, with how to fund infrastructure, right? And the whole country is struggling with how to fund infrastructure. When property taxes were rising rapidly when these buildings were created, it wasn't a problem to know that we could raise enough property tax to pay them off. We are not in that scenario anymore. So, the proper way to fund long-term infrastructure buildings is to pay for them when you use them, which means you pay for them with bonds, right? You pay, you take a fifteen-year bond out, and you use the building for fifteen years. So that's the proper way to fund for long-term structures. I asked city council about setting more aside in reserves to fund for long, for major capital investments, and again, they said the correct answer, and I believe it true, is also correct, to do that through bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry.
Thank you. Yes, the city is based upon the twenty-year budgeting plan, and ultimately, it's critical for council to have that vision in order to make sure that they're not just looking at the short term, they are looking at the long term. And whether or not there's been issues of looking at selling off land, is that a short-term or long-term vision? Definitely, it needs to be evaluated from a city council standpoint. I do think that council does need to restrict some of the short-term goals in order to reduce the cost. So, when they're doing evaluations of studies, they need to look at what to remove from the plan just to reduce the overall cost in the short term. But I do think that the city is already looking at the twenty-year plan, and from that standpoint, when they're evaluating things like the Civic Center and infrastructure, they either look at it from how they're going to fund, how they're going to fund it in a twenty-year plan, or working with a private-public partnership to have them pay part of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next topic is on campaign finance. We'll be starting with John Cordis, and you'll have sixty seconds to respond. How much money do you intend to spend in your campaign? And have you, sorry, and how much have you accepted from donors who are related to real estate development? And what do you say to voters who are concerned about the potential for campaign money to influence city council decisions?
Well, this is my second election of the year, so I spent about six thousand dollars in the special election in August. And so far for the November campaign, I've loaned myself a thousand dollars, and I'm collecting donations. All my donations have been from family, friends, and residents. And I specifically have stated in both my special election and this election that I'm refusing to accept donations from developers because so many residents are concerned about that. Now, given all that, I think people need to understand there are fifty-six thousand voters in Sunnyvale, and that's about thirty thousand voting households. So to reach that audience, not the people here that are interested enough to come to a meeting, but the ones that aren't, that are just gonna look for any point of information to vote, it's gonna cost you fifteen thousand dollars. And the people that are most likely to provide you with fifteen thousand dollars, or thirty, or forty, or fifty, as you've heard, some people are sixty thousand dollars, are the developers. So it's a legitimate concern, and I think publicly-funded elections is the right way to solve this problem. A dollar a voter would give everybody enough money to campaign equally.
Thank you. Larry.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, it was very difficult to run basically two campaigns simultaneously this year. As far as the August campaign, I raised about fifteen thousand dollars, of which my two biggest donors were Sun Pack and the Realtor Pack. At the end of the day, they were small in comparison to all the friends and family and leader, and community leaders that comprise fifty-two, two-thirds of my contributions for the August campaign. For the November campaign, I've raised actually very little money up to this point, and still trying to collect donations. From my standpoint, I, you know, the dollars coming in don't affect my votes in any way. I'm actually inspired by some of the people, some of the retired people that have donated to my campaign, living on fixed incomes and giving me twenty, fifty, a hundred, five hundred dollars from their donations, and I appreciate that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike McCarthy.
Were we allowed to raise money? Oh, my granddaughter gave me a dollar. I basically am self-funded, and I've raised about forty-five hundred dollars. I've loaned my campaign forty-five hundred dollars. I'm not soliciting any donations from anybody at this time. I'm certainly not a fan of special interest money. I think it's very unethical to take money from developers and then give them deviations on the building plan and then say we're gonna do the things right this time around. So, the city council has got a terrible history of this, but that's the nature of the beast. And, but for me personally, I'm not soliciting any funds, I'm not taking money from anybody as far as a special interest group. Pretty much, I'm self-funding myself. So, as far as how much I need to raise, whatever I need to win. So, we'll see what this is. My first campaign, so I'm not sure, but so far, it's about forty-five hundred dollars is what I have raised, and it's for myself.
Thank you. All right, so now we're gonna turn to the question that we gave to the candidates in advance to give them an opportunity to ask or to address something that we did not ask about previously. We're gonna start with Larry Klein. You'll have sixty seconds. Would you please state and answer a question you wish you had been asked?
Sure. My question is, what have you done environmentally in Sunnyvale? And as far as I'm concerned, I've been a longtime advocate for sustainability. You know, I promoted alternative transportation, bicycle pedestrian, as we've talked about previously. I was on the citizens group for the Stevens Creek Trail, hoping to get more of a trail experience throughout the city. On the planning commission, I helped craft a lot of the green building codes that are currently making Sunnyvale, the new development in Sunnyvale, so green. From landscaping requirements to the quality of materials, to LEED standards, platinum standards that you'll see in some of the buildings that are being built right now. From a study issue standpoint, I proposed multiple things to try to make the city better. From an EV charger requirements for new development programs to, for other sustainability, to convert existing shopping centers to have EVs, and promote basically better utilization of our recycled water, sorry, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike McCarthy.
One question that I would like to have asked is, what are we gonna do about the three hundred and ten million dollar pension shortfall? Right now, the city has a four hundred million dollar annual budget, and we have a three hundred and ten million dollar pension shortfall. Currently, the city employees do not contribute to that pension plan. Most individuals pay into social security that are working. We need to reform the budget, we need to take a hard look at that. I can't understand why, you know, I'm sure there's reasons, but if you've got revenues up fifty percent in four years, and you're selling off assets, and you've got a three hundred and ten million dollar pension shortfall, and you've got all these issues, we really need to take a look at that and really think more in line with balancing the budget. And I'm all for smaller government and less government. And if you elect me, that's what I'll try to bring, is less government and smaller government.
Thank you. John Cordis.
Thank you. My question is, and it's one of my top three issues, how would I make Sunnyvale more sustainable? As I've talked about already a couple times tonight, I wanna increase developer fees to slow growth, right? And give us a lot more money to provide more affordable housing and more transportation alternatives. We cannot meet our climate action plan goals or the state requirements of forty percent reduction by twenty thirty and continue to allow development to increase in Sunnyvale and vehicle miles traveled to increase. So we've gotta figure out a way to drive that down. Traffic is the forty percent of our greenhouse gas emissions, and tackling traffic is a Traffic is the forty percent of our greenhouse gas emissions and tackling traffic is a win for the planet and a win for Sunnyvale residents' quality of life. We need tougher building standards. We should be requiring zero-net energy commercial buildings today. We know that the buildings are gonna last fifty years. We need them now. We need to electrify everything, as a friend of mine who's running another seat said. We need to develop plants to reduce imported water needs by fifty percent by twenty thirty. I've proposed all along to capture more local storm runoff and increase recycled water.
Thank you. Alright, now it's time for the closing question and we will have Mike McCarthy be the first to respond. Why should voters choose you to serve on the city council?
I would respectfully request that you vote for me simply because the fact that I'm an outsider. I'm not a politician. I have no desire to be a politician, although I am a politician because I'm running. I have thirty years of business, practical, practical business experience, worked on commission my entire life. And that means one thing, getting results. The city needs an overhaul. And you need someone with an outside perspective that comes in, that's not affiliated with all the, the people in the city that can come in as a third-party outsider and look honestly at the way the process works and what the city's doing and redefine that so that the city of Sunnyvale can get the resources that they need, that the citizens deserve and pay for and stop with all the unethical behavior and get back to a real bottom budget here that makes sense for all of us. That's why you should elect me and I request your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Klein.
Yes, thank you very much. I hope that informed voters get a chance to vote, make the right decision again in November. I've been active in the city for the last fifteen years and I've been commuted, committed to community service and protecting our community. I understand different ways to improve the quality of life for everyone and I'm committed to doing that. I will listen to our citizens. I've started basically office hours on a weekly basis just to make sure that I hear your concerns. And it gives me a lot of pleasure to make sure to sol, to solve those problems. I, I hope that, I understand our community issues, whether or not they're traffic, traffic, airplane noise or affordable housing. I love living in Sunnyvale and I need your support. I ask for your vote, you, to vote for Larry Klein for seat four in, in November. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Cordis.
Thank you. You can tell by the ethical and environmentally sustainable positions I've taken that I'm not gonna get any support from the development community or the Apartment Owners Association or the Mobile Home Park Owners Association, like some of my competitors have taken money from. I have a better vision for a more sustainable Sunnyvale and a more enjoyable Sunnyvale with a better quality of life. There's a lot of changes we need to make to be able to drive traffic in the right direction so that everybody here likes living here more instead of dreads having to go on the roads every day. I have the experience, drive, and dedication and time to work to protect you and to improve quality of life for everyone in Sunnyvale. I want to thank you for your participation tonight and I encourage you to vote for John Cordis for seat four in November eighth. Thank you.
Very good. Well, join me in a round of applause for the candidates. As I mentioned, they have literature on the back tables for you to gather. Also, they will be staying later so you can ask them questions one-on-one. For tonight's video, please look at the calendar listing on the website LWVCS.org. Stands for League of Women Voters, CupertinoSunnyvale.org. So we have all of our forums posted there and we should have this forum up probably in the next forty-eight hours. They're, they're really turning these around very quickly. Once again, encourage you to take a look at VotersEdge.org. That has a lot more information about the election, both on candidates, the ballot measures, as well as the money behind them. Excellent website and more information is being added every single day, so do please continue to check to that and let your friends know about that website in particular. Thank you very much to the city of Sunnyvale for the facilities, for the team that's doing the video. Thank my league members for helping out with tonight's forum and thank you all for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Please remember to cast your vote for the November eighth election. Good night.